Can you hear me now? Okay, alright. Sorry, thank you. My husband and I are parents of now a fourth grader and a second child who will join this school in a few years. I feel incredibly disappointed, saddened, and disgusted by the selfish behavior of certain adults in this community. From using school grounds as a personal political platform to protest from parents at the Hills on having our children housed there on the basis of COVID, and now this. A lawsuit that will only drain funds that should have been exclusively used for the benefit of the kids and will ultimately jeopardize the rebuild of the school entirely. It is a complete farce for these individuals to claim that they are in any way interested in the well-being of our children when their actions is successful, will simply leave our children at a school that is in deplorable condition. They are basically employing a scorch-the-earth tactic. If they can't have it their way, then no one can have it. It is times like these that I'm embarrassed to say that I am a member of the legal profession, but thankfully what I do in my job is not solely intended to be disruptive. It is insane the amount of time and resources that have been and will continue to be wasted because of selfishly motivated people who use environmental scare tactics. I urge the board to not give up on the Heights and our kids, and if there is a means for those of us to help fund the defense against this frivolous lawsuit, let us know. My family does not have deep pockets, and certainly whatever we would contribute would be a sacrifice to us, but our family will be happy to help. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ian Philip, followed by Wendy Wardlow.
Hello, my name is Ian Philip. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ian.
I was talking to an old friend yesterday afternoon who taught PE at Carmel Del Mar for many years. She now teaches PE at Ada Harris in Cardiff. I was really saddened to hear her telling me that Procopio was preparing another lawsuit to stall their school rebuild, even though they've already lost $500,000 and their design has not changed. I hung up thinking, well, at least we won our battle. About an hour later, I got a message from a parent letting me know that the first F Civil lawsuit had been filed through Procopio for our school, as requested by the entity Save the Field. I was in disbelief that after all this time, discussion, reasoning, compromise, and thorough weighing of options by the district, school board, and architectural team, that this is where we are. I was raised that you should not demonize people you don't agree with, that you should try to find some common ground and be helpful to people who disagree with you. So for that reason, as hard as it may be, if you have issues with the field, the design, the parking lot, or any other element of the final project, I hereby respectfully disagree with you. However, this lawsuit and what it will mean for our students and staff has crossed over the line. I am not a legal scholar, but this seems egregious that two small school districts are being sued simultaneously over the same frivolous pursuit, that the concept or idea of someone's casual use of private property as their personal park supersedes the needs of a modern school facility to serve the needs of the students in it. In both cases, this is being done under the guise of protecting the environment. Procopio seems to care about only one type of green, and it isn't the kind with roots. At this point, this lawsuit is a personal insult to the staff of Del Mar Heights. Considering the length of the design process, the multiple compromises, the 100% unity of staff and majority of the community, the weak nature of the complaints, and the fact that all of us are packed up and the school is ready to be demoed in three weeks. The bond passed with the majority, the design was approved with input from all parties, the board approved the work unanimously after extensive examination. I picture myself and my colleagues next spring, off-site, sharing a campus, hopefully in a better situation with the pandemic, but eagerly awaiting our return to our beautiful new campus, not reading about Procopio keeping it a patch of dirt as we bleed money from the bond to the detriment of all eight schools. We have seen enough, heard enough, and the teachers and staff of Del Mar Heights Elementary School have had enough. Don't start this lawsuit. We won't stand for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Wardlow, followed by Ethan Frank. If he's there, if not, Sandeep Patel. Wendy, you're muted.
Unmuted.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Like, this is the best that I've done so far. Okay.
Yeah. Good.
Good evening, Dr. McClurg and the Del Mar Union School District Board members. I am Wendy Wardlow, former principal of Del Mar Heights School. I am concerned about a potential lawsuit that might delay or derail the rebuild of Del Mar Heights School. The time for the rebuild is now. The students and staff at Del Mar Heights have been subjected to functioning in a substandard environment that was fraught with hazards affecting their health and safety. Then for the past several years, staff, parents, and community members remained uniformly positive and proactive throughout an inclusive design process. The district was meticulous in ensuring our community concerns were answered completely and transparently. This past week, the staff spent hundreds of hours packing up the school and going through the emotional process of moving on to a year of the school community being divided during the rebuild. I personally worked for four days helping Mrs. Eckstein in the library with two other retirees. That is a level of commitment that was displayed to make this move a positive one. Then to be slammed with the potential of a lawsuit which could impact the rebuild is too much. Enough is enough. It's time for the community to rise up and make sure this rebuild will occur on time and without incurring expenses for heinous lawsuits. Whatever we need to do, we'll be there. Whatever it takes, we'll take it on, and we won't back down. Thank you to the DMUSD Board of Trustees for steadfastly advocating for all children. You are in a difficult situation, but you have a valiant and united community supporting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Frank, followed by Sandeep Patel.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Hard to follow Miss Wardlow. I do come to the board. I'm really disappointed to hear that lawsuit has been filed against DMUSD by Procopio on behalf of Save the Field, also known as some neighbors of Mir mountain who want to preserve the grassy field as a foreground to their ocean views. Attention to who is or has led this organization in parallels to the home location of the leader of Save the Park in Cardiff in the Cardiff Elementary School District lawsuit is so obvious that it's almost comical. They did not come at the cost of our collective time and money. I predicted this would be the outcome a few months ago if you did not bend to their will on the initial complaint regarding the MND, as the writing was clearly on the wall once Procopio was brought into play. I want to express my support for the district to fight this despicable lawsuit in the interest of our kids and this in this community. I was thrilled when the board voted unanimously to proceed with the rebuild. It demonstrated to me that you care. Please do not lose that caring attitude for our children and continue the good fight. You will have the overwhelming support of the Frank family and the community at large. My sons are disappointed and wonder why some would want to continue school and facilities that have no running water, rad droppings, and poor ventilation in a post-COVID world. I now have a good life lesson to teach them regarding the distinction between selfish concern for oneself versus concern and care for others for the community good. We also discussed how some with influence and money try to bully others when they do not get what they want. We reviewed how bullying is not just physical, but can be done through legal channels should the money be there to hire those who know how to manipulate our legal system. For those in Save the Field who are doing this, thanks for the life lessons for my boys. However, this lawsuit is highly inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandeep Patel, followed by Clayton Schefrey.
I can hear me?
Yes.
Most of us didn't want to be here, but for some, this is exactly their intended destination. For the opposition, the school and our kids are in the way of their view and their park, even though it's school district land. With almost two-thirds of voters approving bond amendment, the dire need for a Del Mar Heights Elementary rebuild to address the multiple risks facing our children, and to move the schoolchildren away from the canyon with fire risk into safer ground, after nine dedicated public meetings and over half dozen board meetings, each time catering to the opposition and shrinking the school and expanding the field, the opposition led by Save the Field is taking legal action against the district and our children. At this point, it's clear that compromising with bad faith actors such as Save the Field and those that support them is an exercise in futility. They will reward compromise with legal summons, and they will now use their shadow corporation to take legal action against the district. One truism is clear: the first one to run from the scene of the crime is the one who committed the crime in the first place. And here, the crime is clear: a small cabal of elites with legal connections to harm our children intend to do so using any means necessary, including legal. The victims are also clear: the majority who voted for MM who are having their democratic vote overturned by tyrants hiding behind the guise of lawyers. The taxpayer dollars will be wasted on frivolous legal proceedings, and by far most importantly, the children who have less resources for their education. It wasn't enough harm for our kids that state funding education had to be cut related to COVID-19. It wasn't enough that our kids are not going to be able to attend the school they call home. No, these individuals must pile into the misery and twist the knife to extract theirs from our kids as well. I can see why they're trying so hard to hide their names. The bullying by Save the Fields cabal of our children has no limits, as the legal action has shown. We all know that with bullies, you can always try to do the right thing, as the district has done time and time again with compromises, and still be bullied. They don't care that the children are in a fire in COVID-19 unsafe surroundings, because like a bully, they'll do anything to take our lunch money. But there comes a time where the adults in the room have to intervene and resolve the bullying, and we're at the juncture where the board and the district lawyers are the adults in the room who can stand up to the bully, and I thank them for this. Lost in this historically tenuous moment is a sense of broader community where the nefarious actions of a few are allowed to hurt the majority and in particular its children. This is not about one school, it's about the entire district as a community. There are no boundaries behind the meanness that belies such a lawsuit, the attempts to harm the other for one's own gain. We have seen this time and time again recently, and we see it again here. This is not a problem of a single school, but a failure in human decency which transcends all school boundaries. And in a time when we need a community united to face our greatest challenges as society, a small minority will do anything they can to tear us apart to get theirs. And in times like these, the board leadership becomes even more crucial to remind us that we are all tied together as one district and one community facing these problems together, and to fight the smallness and meanness that will otherwise tell the district apart. If the right thing to do were the easy thing to do, it would already be done. But I can promise you by doing the right thing here and fighting for our children's future, a generation of children that will be safely educated in New Heights will be grateful for your efforts. When I look my children in the eyes, I want them to know that in this moment, we have done everything possible to ensure their safety and security, and for those children that will come after. I know you feel the same. Thank you for standing up for our children's future against these tyrants.
Okay, thank you. Clayton Schefrey, followed by Heidi Merkel Eckstein.
Thank you. My name is Clayton Schefrey, and I have an incoming kindergartner as well as a newly graduated second grader who will be in the third grade next year at Del Mar Heights. Yesterday, I told my son that I loved him, and yeah, he responded to me by telling me that he loved me more. I told him, that's impossible. I love him with every ounce of my being, and it'd be impossible for him to love me anymore than I already do, and we agreed to love each other the same. I bring this anecdote up because there's one thing in common among everybody here: we all love our children, both sides of the argument. We all love our children, want what's best for our children. That is why we're here, why we join these meetings, why we spend all this time coming in and making these arguments and doing our WhatsApp chats. And over the last few months, many, many people have gotten extremely emotional, passionate, and at a time, unfortunately, uncivilized. I want to say thank you guys to the board. You guys have been subject to some of these attacks just for simply allowing people to speak their mind, and there's an expectation, as if there was some expectation for you to do something more than just listen. So again, I thank you, and I know your jobs are very difficult. I want to urge you to stay the course, because it is the right one. The opposition to our new school is very infuriating to me. At first, some of the opposition seemed genuine, but now it is apparent that it is not. The latest lawsuit filing for the Save the Field has a CEO listed in Redding, California, not even a local person, which tells me that they are dealing, we are dealing with people who are not genuine. They don't want their names known, because they don't care about our kids, our safety, their values are tied to their wallets and bank account balances. They have taken the tactic of so many of our dishonest politicians: sue, 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 and then sue again and leave the earth scorched. The latest argument about fire safety is something I had to just laugh at. I don't understand the acronyms of all the filings, but apparently some report is required or requested to test the safety from the fire. That's absurd. When has a fire threatened our school in recent history? What is more dangerous: a fire that may never come one day, or the mold and pests that currently grow and live at our school now? The long and short of it is that this lawsuit is leeching fronts from our children and all of the Del Mar schools. And for what? So an attorney can charge a fee, so a resident can keep a view? I don't profess to be perfect, but I again know I love my children and I want what's best for them. I'm willing to make sacrifices, as I know everybody here is. The next year is a sacrifice in itself. We are changing our lives so that we can build something better for the future. Some of us won't even get to recognize that, but they're still willing to make that sacrifice. The thing I'm not willing to do is to accept others ruining that opportunity for my children so that their egos and bank accounts can be inflated or viewed preserved. They lost, the majority won, as they should have. Fortunately, this is not the electoral college. Majority wins, the minority does not. Please build the school.
Thank you. Heidi Merkel Eckstein, followed by Mike Milligan. Heidi, you're muted.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, sorry, I was having unmute issues. Hi, I'm Heidi Merkel Eckstein. I am the Library Media Specialist and learned in recess duty. Been with the district for almost 15 years, but seven at the Heights. And I'm also a local homeowner. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. I must admit, I was completely taken aback at the news that this lawsuit was moving forward. We heard from staff and students and community about inadequate facilities, crumbling inadequate structures. We heard about experts, our meeting and exceeding requirements. We've gone back and forth with architects, and I thought for sure, if something was amiss with the plans, something that was wrong, it would have been brought to light, dealt with, and filed. So surely if the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed, then we could move forward, securing the knowledge that while maybe nobody got exactly what they wanted, the best compromise prevailed, and that we were going to get the new school. And I, along with many others, have worked unrelentingly these past few, I don't even know how many days, weeks it was, packing and organizing, exhausted yet excited that we were finally moving forward. And we were excited, because we know that what children need the most right now is security, predictability, and faith, that the future will look a lot better than the past and the present. Our world right now has so much in it that is beyond our individual control. I, as an adult, find this unsettling, and I know for a fact the children find it even more so. So we need to give our children that. We need to give them faith that the future is going to look a lot better. We need to take a good, hard look at what is important. We need to prioritize our kids. We have to move forward with this rebuild. We have to give our children what they need the most right now. The knowledge that they are a priority, that their future will be better, that their school will be safe, and that we will do everything we can to give them the education and the safety and the security that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Milligan, followed by Frank Stonebanks. Mike, you're muted.
Hi, everyone. This is really what I was trying to prevent with my comments at our last meeting. I am super bummed that there's a lawsuit versus kids in Del Mar. In Cardiff, they have signs that read, "Name a person who filed the lawsuit hates kids." They had 209 kids outside that person's house chanting, "Build the school, build the school, build the school." One of the moms I spoke with actually teared up, speaking about the negative impact this lawsuit has had on their community. The advice one parent gave me was, just ask them how much they want in your first meeting, and that'll get it done. These people at Save the Fields are bringing this to our community, and it's sad. I spoke with a member of Play Outside Del Mar organization who swore on his family to reiterate that Play Outside Del Mar has nothing to do with Save the Fields, and they're not linked in any way. I want to say thank you to all the board and their great work, baking the wiki. The lawsuit won't change one inch of your beautiful design, but will build a stronger resolve in our community. And lastly, I just want to say, this community rocks. There are so many people who have been supportive of this school rebuild. I've enjoyed getting to know many strangers, even during COVID, who share a passion for the kids and this rebuild. It's been magic watching people come together in a time where many are not allowed to get close to each other. I know there's a really small group of haters, but there's so many positive things that will come out of this horrible situation. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Frank Stonebanks, followed by Rosanna Alvarado Martin. Thank you. Rosanna Alvarado Martin, followed by Arzo Nass.
Good evening. My name's Rosanna Alvarado Martin. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm just aghast at some of the comments that have been made so far, and the fact that no one's held the district responsible for any of the reasons why there is a challenge to the SEQA. I am all about rebuilding the school, and I am absolutely disgusted in the current condition that it's in, and that the district allowed it to be like that, and allowed students to go to school there in deplorable conditions, and for teachers to work in those deplorable conditions. But if we're going to spend $56 million, I expect it to be the safest school, not only for the children and the students, but also for the community surrounding the school. And the district has not agreed to do a timed evacuation plan, which I feel very strongly about, and also the increased emissions and other pollutions. There's light pollution, there's noise pollution, and there's air pollution that the district refuses to acknowledge. So for all these people that say that they care about their children, they're putting their children first, and safety is first, I don't believe that the district is doing that. I think that they're pushing this plan through to stay on a timeline. But when all these parents' kids have graduated from the Heights and they move away, the community is going to be left with a rushed school that's polluting their community, and it's not right. And so I believe that the district needs to do the right thing. Somebody said, "For the community good." I agree, for the community good, because the community is also paying for this. And as far as bullying, I know so many people in the neighborhood that have stopped speaking at these meetings because other people have been so harsh on these meetings, and they felt so beat up that they're absolutely intimidated by them. And you heard it in one of the first speakers that said, "We'll hunt you down, we'll track you down." How neighborly is that? That's not coming together. So I'm absolutely disgusted by this process. And to say that it's stealing money from the children, I agree. Nobody wins in this, but the district had a choice to do this process right from the beginning, and they chose not to. They chose not to listen to people when they brought these issues up earlier, and so now here we are. And Dr. Fauci said today that the best way for our kids to go to school and be healthy is to be outside, and that's why you're seeing the petitions from Ocean Air and from Hills, because they don't want the additional students on their campus, when we have a school right now that could hold these kids and get us through the COVID situation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Arzo Nass, followed by Bryce Dixon, and then we have a couple more people. Matt Ziskin, I don't think you had your hand raised, so if you have requested to speak, but you need to raise your hand on the call, so if you're on the phone, it's star nine. Okay, so now we have Arzo, followed by Bryce. Arzo, you're muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak. I'm just sitting here reflecting on the speaker right before me, and I have to tell you, like, it really just breaks my heart that, I mean, I don't know that person personally, myself, but I've been on enough of these calls to hear the overwhelming majority, you know, for the rebuild, like myself, but a small vocal minority who are against it, and it just really bums me out that these are neighbors, we share streets, we probably walk by each other all the time, walking with our kids or our dogs, and I wish we could find a way to kind of come together and heal some of these fractures. I'm not going to try to convince anyone on that side, because it's honestly, they have their, we've seen things, and we have ours, but the thing I try to teach my kids is, you know, you say your piece, you say what you want, you speak up for yourself, but at this point, the public has spoken, the overwhelming majority of people have spoken, the board has spoken, and I would just like those neighbors who do not agree to accept it and learn to stop, not stall the process for everybody else. They think it's a slam through process, it's been rushed. I see it as complete opposite. I say it's been going on forever. So they're not going to convince me, and I'm not going to convince them. So I guess I just want to say to the board, you know, you have our support. I wish I could say I was surprised by this lawsuit, but unfortunately, I'm not. I've been to enough of these meetings to know that, you know, unfortunately, there's a small group that really just thinks about what's in it for them, how things affect just them. I've seen it on issues of deciding where kindergartners should go to school. I've seen it on issues when we are talking about a streetlight for Del Mar Heights, and it really is a bummer. So I really, I'm going to try to focus on the positive and hope that most rational people will accept the word of the majority and just find a way so that we don't drag this out forever. I mean, this has already gone on too long. So if, you know, I would say to the folks on the other side, if you could try to see it from our perspective and our kids' perspectives, and also one other thing about those petitions, I have to tell you, I'm trying very hard not to let my kids know about that. The petitions where they're saying, "Don't, you know, we don't want Del Mar Heights kids coming to our schools," that really bums them out. So right now, I'm here trying to talk to you guys and make sure my kids don't hear me, because I don't want them to think that there's anybody in the world who doesn't want them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bryce Dixon, followed by Trisha Dixon. Go ahead, Bryce.
Oh, she's going to follow me? Okay, okay. Thanks for letting me talk again. I just want to reiterate my support for the board. To reiterate what Arzo said, I'm not surprised either that we're coming to a lawsuit. I think the playbook was pretty clear from Cardiff, that we were going to end up with one of these LLCs suing and trying to get a settlement, and here we are. And I guess the travesty of this SEQA, as I read it, is that there's no penalty for the other side to bring these actions, so they're at the very least getting attorney's fees out of this. So like I said last time, and I'm going to put it softer and gentler than I did last time, but the only leverage we have on our side is to let the public know who is benefiting from these delays and, I guess, from any settlement funds. So I will say this nicely: whoever is benefiting financially from this is going to, I guess, draw the ire of the community, to put it very mildly. So I hope you guys take the best course of action that you deem fit regarding settling, fighting this in court, whatever is going to cost us the least amount of money. You know, I would love to say battle it out in court, but if that's not the best action, do what you guys need to do, and we're going to end up cleaning it up on the other end, I guess it looks like. So I'm sad that it came to this. I'm happy that you guys are still fighting the good fight, and I appreciate your efforts, and I yield back the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trisha Dixon, followed by Robert DeChico.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to, my name is Trisha Dixon, and I'm going to keep my comments very brief this evening, because I have a very unhappy toddler on my hands tonight. So I just really wanted to come forth and wholeheartedly show support for the rebuild plan, the members of the school board, and the district, and all the decisions you all have made so far. Someone just made a comment that this has been rushed. That truly, truly blows my mind. You guys have done a phenomenal job with this process, and I have been to every single one of these meetings, and you've listened to everything everyone has said, and you've taken it to heart. And just because you don't get what you want 100% of the time does not mean you were not listened to. So let's try to keep that straight. This is the plan for the new school. It's amazing. You know, anyone that's in support of a lawsuit, please know you're making the wrong choice, and, you know, everyone is going to see you for who you are and what you're after, which at this point, time is clear that it's just money. We need to move forward, and our kids deserve that we move forward quickly. The time to rebuild is now, and this is the right plan. And, you know, to echo what others have said... And you know, to echo what others have said in regards to petitions circling around or individuals being encouraged to write heartfelt letters to Holly and the district. But it is so embarrassing to hear that that's coming from our community and I, I just want to say, like, keep those details yourself. Our kids are already aware that they're going to be guests on another campus and they're a little nervous about that because we are talking about kids here. And we don't want them to hear that they're actually unwanted at those campuses at the same time. So I, I'm really proud of the majority of the community for stepping forward and really showing that, that this is what we want, this is what we need and we need to move forward. And also thank you to all the teachers for all of the packing they've been doing and getting everything prepared and all the love and support that they've been showing to our kids because this is a huge undertaking. And I'm really just looking forward to stepping foot on that new campus in, in a year and taking another deep breath and relaxing that this is all said and done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert DeChico followed by Matt Ziskin. So whoever's on the phone, I'm not sure whether that is Robert or Matt. I can't, you can, you're unmuted.
It looks like it should be Robert. Is that you, Robert?
Okay.
All right. So I have the phone number for Robert, but I don't have another Zoom. I can get Matt.
Okay, maybe we'll get Matt followed by Irene Young and then maybe try to patch him in another way. Okay, I see you, Matt. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks. My wife Chelsea and I are parents of two current students at Delmar Heights and two more future Delmar Heights students. We've been part of the quiet majority of supporters for the rebuild for the past couple of years and become more vocal as we've seen a vocal minority do their part to sabotage, rebuild Delmar Heights. We're strong supporters of the rebuild. Anyone who's been paying attention over the last few months and joined the Delmar USD Zoom calls, it is very clear that a very small minority with questionable motives are the only opposition to this project. As we've heard throughout this call, the threat of a lawsuit is an incredibly selfish act. We're hopeful this lawsuit does not delay the rebuild and like the vast majority of others in our community, we are ready to band together and do what we need to make the situation right and get the school rebuilt on schedule. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Irene Young followed by Kelly Huggett. And if Matt, if Robert DeChico comes on, we should just go ahead and patch him into the panel room. Okay. Irene, you're muted. Okay, and Kelly Huggett, you need to raise your hand so we can find you. Irene Young, I see you in the panelist box, but you're still muted. Chris, can we unmute on our end or is that something that, there we go. Okay, hi. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I also want a new school. I also love this community. We've lived here since the seventies. But there's a lot of things and a lot of unpleasant things going on. First of all, everybody that comes on that wants the plans that have been presented, call it a minority. That is not a minority. There were hundreds of young people and old people at many of the meetings that spoke up against it and I feel that we were beaten down. I don't think it's appropriate for people saying, "We will not forget this." To me, that's a threat and I resent it. I've been attending meetings for remodeling the school for over two years and I've been meeting and we've been allowed to speak for three minutes. This is not good. After the three minutes, nobody discusses the concerns of the public. They go on and they do what they want to do anyway. I think it's interesting that if I build a house right here, I have to meet all kinds of obligations. But somehow a school that's going to be holding our children can do anything they want to. I think that when the board has these meetings and you give three minutes, they should have a response from the board. I also wrote letters to the city council because they're trying to work up something to have more playgrounds. I wonder why they want more playgrounds. Is this not for children also? And don't the children that go to school need a place to play? When you're going to take up all that space with parking in and out, cars coming in and out all along where all the classes are, that is so ridiculous. I can't believe it. I've, like I say, I've been here since the seventies and I walk up to that school and I have grandchildren that have gone to the school and they spoke at the many meetings that you claim was only a minority. That's not true. And I'm not doing any lawsuit, but I resent people calling me a minority. I am, other than I'm Mexican, I don't mind that. But I don't like the fact that you make it sound like we're not in sync with our community. We are. I love this community. I love the children. They've all been playing in the streets lately because the school's been locked up. Well, what do you think about that? The, the trails and the schools have all been locked up for several months. Is that for the children? I don't think so. You don't know that children don't only learn in the classroom but in the field.
Okay, thank you. We have someone on the line and I'm not sure whether it's Kelly Huggett or Robert DeChico. We're going to try to find out. And if... Okay, welcome back, everybody. And I think the participants are already in the call, so we don't have to wait for anybody to join. Give me a moment. Okay, we are at item four point one, reconvene open session at seven twenty PM. Four point two, report action taken in closed session. The board met in closed session and discussed the lawsuit that has been filed by Save the Field. The board is required to have a settlement conference within forty-five days of the filing. The board authorized legal counsel to request that Save the Field participate in an early settlement conference with a retired judge as a neutral mediator to see if we can reach an acceptable resolution of the lawsuit as soon as possible. Item five point one, adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll say second.
Okay, G Y is the second. A roll call vote. Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Maugh?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
An aye for me. The meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-one PM. Good evening, everyone.